To order, I ask that we all please rise for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Thank you, Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Tonight, we are thrilled to have many students' families from our Polk Elementary School. Before we begin with the award recognition, I just want to clarify that when we are finished with the award recognition, we will take a brief pause so that we can take some pictures of the children and their awards with the Superintendent, Dr. Cardamola. However, you are all welcome to stay for the entire meeting as we always have very important information to share with the public. If you do not wish to stay, you are certainly not obligated to do so.
I'd just like to start, we have a couple of awards that are not from Polk. Every once in a while, we have students who's schedules don't line up with ours. So I have two students from the high school here with us this evening that we recognized last week, but I want to be able to have come up tonight. They're both for Dream Awards at the high school, and Dream, as many of you may know, is our, basically our positive behavioral system, but it's become an entire culture at the high school. It, Dream stands for determination, respect, excellence, achievement, and motivation. And so to get one of these awards, you have to demonstrate those ideals at the high school. So I have two people with us tonight. The first is Benjamin Hudobanko. And also, for January, the Dream Award, to Robert Robbie Lawton.
Moving forward, the Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate the following Polk School Golden Bucket winners that were recognized for their excellence in citizenship.
I have to give a little bit of directions, just so that we're not nervous, the younger ones. So when I call your name, come here to get your certificate from me, and shake hands with me and with Mrs. Crotty, because I know you're right there, the Superintendent and the board chair, and then sit back down and then we'll take the picture. But I'm just going to keep calling the names because you can see how many of you there are here this evening. So I ask you to come straight here and go back. So we'll start with Grade Three, Joseph Sarica. Casey O'Toole. Samar Edbega. Sarah Ramirez. Patrick LaChance.
Congratulations, we're really proud of you. Good job.
Madison Smith. Gabriella Paterzo. Frederick Mathis. Brandon McCleary. Emily Matozo. In Fourth Grade, Gabriella Perez. Jake Barberi. Jason Keros. Julia DiCampo. Ethan Rodriguez. Christian Bratz. Oh, sorry. One more time, that was Christian Bratz. Michael Fleming. Alexandra Burkhardt. Adaya Salmani. Abby Gallagher. In Grade Five, Michael Gambucci. Sarah Mustafi. Lucas Fen. Rianan Bulwites. Alicia Cruz. Bryn Burley. Leyden Koval. Joshua Adamski. Alexander McCarthy. Tatiana Turney. Elizabeth Byrd. Jacob Wauer. Go back to Third Grade for January and February. See, that's why we had to catch up after losing some time in a couple of canceled meetings due to snow, so that's why we have so many of you here this evening. In Grade Three, Mahmoud Hafiz. Lana Culpa. Lauren Ashmore. Bora Musso. Sophia Angelini. Gabriel Goodman. Luke Acuna. Jacob Fen. Jacob Lucas. And the last of Grade Three, Vincent Taganelli. In Grade Four, Megan Mudarsky. Erin Pensakowski. Logan Pelulius. Grace Pinkerton. And Samuel Falotico. Thank you. Falotico. I practiced too, Sam. I'm sorry. Also, in Grade Four, Stuart Bouvet. Samantha Stoll. Ethan Powell. Adriana Meloragno. And last, in Grade Four, Karina DeRoz. In Grade Five, Kylie O'Brien. Raiki Curtis. Congratulations, Raiki. Liliana Spagnaletti. Drew Kennedy. Emmeline Osborne. Alex DePonte. Allison Stoto. Madeline Nasimento. Anna Almeida. Morgan Hadorsky. Ethan Sikouskas. And Klaus Newsey. Also, so those are the Golden Bucket winners for Excellence Citizenship. We also, at Polk, recognize our Special Area winners, which is Art, Music, and Physical Education. So we're obviously a little backed up on them also. In November, for Art, we had Gianna Berry. And again, Morgan Hadorsky, this time for Music. Adriana Meloragno, Physical Education. In December, Rianan Bulwites for Art. Mattingly Crater for Music. Ruth Fornell for Physical Education. In January, Frederick Mathis for Art. Camilla Bikbova for Music. And Addison Finiteri for Physical Education. In February, Emma Newguy for Art. And again, Casey O'Toole for Music. Jackson Slattery for Physical Education. We had someone join us, Alec McCarthy. Is there anyone else who may have come in that I had already called your name? I just don't want to miss you if you came out tonight. We're going to take a small recess to take some photos with the Superintendent. If, do this by grade? There are so many of you from Polk. Why don't we do all of Third Grade first, no matter what your word was, then we'll do Fourth and Fifth, okay? All the Third Graders come up to the front of the desk? And we're going to face that way.
Okay, that's always the favorite part of this job, especially since I don't have to pronounce all of those names. So thank you, Dr. Cardamola, for doing that. Board members should have received in their packets the Board of Education minutes from March 9th, 2015. Ask for a motion to accept these minutes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the March 9th, 2015. Board of Education, regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Two abstentions? So moved. Moving on to Item F, Public Participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? Can I ask if there are any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item G, Budget Status. Brown?
Thank you, Mrs. Crotty. Board members received in their packet on March 30th, the February Budget Status Update, in which you see we continue to run under budget in staff, both certified and non-certified. And one of the lines that we were keeping a close eye on, contracted repair and maintenance continues to improve as we go through the year. Some of that is due to our budget freeze, but we're happy to see. Most notably is the grant revenue that is a result of the combination of the 14-15 Educational Cost Sharing Entitlement and the Excess Cost Grant for this year. We have received $811,331. And so I thought it might be a good time to review how it's determined, how do we get this grant money for excess cost? So after a student has reached a threshold of four and a half times our per pupil expenditure. Our per pupil expenditure here in Watertown is $13,516. So four and a half times that is $60,822. Once a single student has reached that threshold in their educational costs, we are then able to apply the remaining costs for their education to the Excess Cost Grant. Now, it's not 100% funded. Typically, we get between 70 and 80% of our costs after that threshold, and that's what this money is for.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Brown? Thank you. Moving on to Item H, Committee Reports. Mr. Nardella is not here, but he reports from Curriculum Instruction Committee, there are no current reports. Policy and Labor, again, no reports. Mr. Lambert, Budget and Finance Committee?
No report at this time.
And back to you, Mr. Lambert, Facilities, please.
No report at this time also.
Thank you. And nothing from Community and Government Engagement from Mr. Nardella? We have no communications from the Secretary, as he is not here, and there was also nothing that has been received. We'll move on to Item J, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to just explain a little bit about the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. Connecticut State law requires that non-tenured teachers whose contracts are not being renewed shall be notified in writing prior to May 1st, 2015. Following the Board's approval to non-renew the non-tenured teachers, I will send a letter to each teacher stating that this action has been approved by the Board of Ed, and as soon as the budget has been finalized, is my hope that I can request that the Board rescind these notices and call back all of the non-tenured teachers. As a note of reference, I have already met with all of those teachers who might receive this letter and let them know that I would be recommending non-renewal of all non-tenured teachers this evening as a budgetary precaution, not related to their performance. So all of our non-tenured teachers are aware that this action may take place this evening. Also, we were asked at a earlier meeting to provide an update on the security grant process, and we have that available this evening. I'm going to ask Mrs. Brown and Mr. Senacola to assist me in updating the Board in addition to what you received in your packet on Friday.
So what you see on the screen here is just a, hard to see when you turn them all off. Just to reacquaint you with the security grant process, this is available to us through Public Act 14-98, which establishes the funding. This is the second round that we are a part of, and our grant award is $209,591. Our total project is 366-803. That one's from memory, but I'm pretty sure that's right. And our grant project has to be complete by June 30th. These are bullets that, some of the things that the grant provides, what we're focusing on are updating the software and then the entry access systems, so card entries in all of the schools and the Board of Education building, CCTV, or Closed Caption Television, the camera systems inside all of the schools. The high school is pretty well-equipped. We talked about maybe adding one there, but aside from that, the high school is good. The other buildings need to be, an awful lot of work that needs to be done for camera work, and also panic alarms at the front entry, and then window treatments for the glass is where our focus is. And Mr. Senacola is going to take you through each one of the schools.
I thought we would break that down by the individual schools and the type of work that we anticipate completing by the end of June. And they're very similar, so we won't dwell on each item, but the fact of the matter is with John Trumbull, we plan on adding window film treatments at designated areas that we've reviewed with the administration and the PD and the Fire Department. Camera surveillance, as most of you might know, John Trumbull didn't really have much in the way of in the way of CCTV systems, whether they be external or internal, so we plan on adding 21 cameras to that building. Just step back a bit and explain the camera process. We looked at all the schools, and the initial design, we basically turned the buildings into prisons. I hate to say that in that way, but the fact is, we wanted to design it so that we could see every corner of every building. And what we did is, we took a closer look at and looked at the reality of the costs involved, and then we worked back to make it a reasonable amount of visibility and a reasonable amount of cost, and still do the job that we need to do as far as surveilling the buildings. So, in John Trumbull's particular case, we had 21 cameras. There's some flexibility there. We may, if we find that at the end of all, we have some additional monies, I'd like to throw more money at cameras, and we'll go ahead and do that. Work has begun at John Trumbull's, as far as the hard wiring is concerned. We saved some money by, instead of having the camera company, the company that actually would do all of the work, the physical work with the cameras and the installation of the cameras, what we ended up doing is, we farmed out the electrical work, and we were able to save about $40 a camera. That's going to equate to quite a bit of money when you look at the overall for the entire district. So, that's in process. Now, the hard wiring will be put in place, and if there's any additional wiring for entry access on the door entry locations, they'll go ahead and wire those at the same time. John Trumbull had the unique situation of not having shades at the classroom level, so for lockdown situations, that became problematic. And so, we identified that, and we went ahead and did a survey and came up with another $14 and $130 worth of shades that we can add to it, and we reviewed that with the principal, and she's happy with what the outcome will be. The hope is that we should be able to start that process. I'm hoping for the April break. Depends on whether we get them in time or not, but it'll be sometime in April. Entry access control systems, again, John Trumbull, with the exception of the front entry, didn't have entry access, so we're adding that to the building as part of the overall process. Office panic is in place. The only thing is software at this point. We just have to go ahead and program it, and they'll be ready to go. And then, of course, the electrical work for the building itself to get all of those systems in place.
Excuse me, Mr. Senacola, before we move on to the next... Just a quick question. When you say that we're doing the electrical ourselves on the installation of those 21 cameras, is that going to affect the warranty on the cameras? Should we have any operational issues with any of them?
No. No, that's... The wiring of the cameras themselves is basically a Cat 6 wire. It's a low voltage wire, and it has nothing to do with warranties, so we don't have...
So, that don't require that they install?
They don't require any of that.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, moving on to Judson. Similar situation, but some of the systems were already in place. So, what we're doing now is we're going to unify the platform, because that was... Let me step back on that, because when we renovated the buildings, Judson was the only school that had dissimilar systems in our district. So, what we intend on doing as part of this overall process is to ensure that we have a unified platform of all of our systems, whether they be the camera systems, entry access, et cetera. They'll all be one unified platform, and make it a lot easier for us to actually monitor and maintain. So, we looked at Judson, made a determination as to how we would do that, and at the same time, when Judson was wired for CCTV, it was thought of at the time that we could only need exterior cameras. As time has gone on and some of the things that we've run into, it just makes more sense to have internal cameras as well, so we're going to add 18 cameras at Judson, part of this process. In addition to that, we're going to be adding the office panic system, which is not in place today. That'll be added as well. And, again, the electrical work will... Using our contract labor, which saves us money. Very similar to Judson, but it does have basically a unified platform. We're just going to add more internal cameras, which they don't have today. And the office panic system will be added as well, along with window film treatments that were approved and reviewed by PD, Fire, and the administration. Did I mention how many cameras we had going on there? I think it was 32. 32 cameras at Polk, by the way. Swift Middle School, that was the first school that we did a renovation as new, and at the time, there wasn't much emphasis on camera systems. It only had four cameras as part of that renovation project. And that, we found to be sorely lacking, and we've decided that we're going to increase that to 49 cameras. We're going to add an additional 49 cameras, both internal and external. Along with that, window film treatments in designated areas and the office panic system as well, just like the rest of the schools, we'll complete that process. The last part of Swift, which was never in place, is the access control system, so we're going to add that as well. And we've worked with Mary Lou and that group to determine what the pattern is for people who enter and exit the building, and, you know, we have that all in place, and we'll wire that as part of it. As was mentioned before, the high school's pretty robust when it comes to cameras, both internal and external. There's some discussion as potentially adding one or two more cameras, and we'll look at it at the tail end of the process to determine whether or not that's feasible or not with the dollars that we have available. And we plan on updating the software and activating the entry access control systems that are currently in place and wired and ready to go. We're going to add some window film treatments, just as we did with the other schools, and add an office panic system as well. Now, when it comes to CCTV, there was some work done. It was the end of the 2014 school year, and we added a remote monitoring system so that we could have a location where it's more readily available for viewing, and that's in place and has been working at least a year now, or about a half a year, give or take. So, that concludes the high school. The last is going to end up being Munson House. Munson House really doesn't have much of anything, and there's been some ongoing discussion as to how much money we really throw at the building in lieu of possibilities of things changing over time, but nevertheless, we felt that we needed to have some safety and security measures in place, and so we're going to add an entry access control system there. And that will also help us with the fact that when all of this is done, it'll be a central location for the role of entry access in the district. So, the flow of who goes to what building and when they're allowed to go into the building will ultimately end up happening at the Munson House or Central Office. So, that system is included in part of this and some of the other numbers that we have. So, there's some electrical work involved, some computers and software that'll be added there, and an entry access control system that will be there that will be district-wide. And...
Wait, I'm sorry. I said there's going to be 32 additional cameras at Polk.
At Polk, yep, yep, yep.
Do any of the board members have questions for Mrs. Senacola? Mr. Orsini?
Well, Jim, go ahead. I just have a quick question through the chair. On the Munson House, is that equipment going to be able to be moved?
Yes. Yes, it's on our network.
Right, that's what I mean, it's easily...
Network-based system.
Easily moved.
Sure. If, at the end of the day, they decide they want to do whatever they're going to do with Munson House, we can always pick the equipment up and just move it along.
Excellent.
Yeah, I was just wondering if any of the cameras are going inside the classrooms?
No.
Mr. Lambert?
Madam Chair, Don beat me to my first question. My second question is, the panic in door systems, card systems. If we lose power, are they battery-backed up?
Yes.
They are. Okay, so, that's not an issue. Are those low voltage also, or...?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions by board members for Mr. Senacola? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Cartamola?
Thank you. Just to complete the last week or so, I spent not as much time as I would have liked to, because it wasn't the entirety of the day with everything else going on. I spent most of last Tuesday at Judson and spent some time with our 3rd and 5th graders there, and our 4th graders I got to see in specials that same day. Part of what interrupted my day was being invited down to lunch at the Senior Center, which was also very nice of them, and I got to touch base with a number of community folks at the Senior Center. Also, I was out again last week, and I did the last two budget presentations to our PTOs, both at the high school, a joint PTO meeting at the middle school for the high school and the middle school. That went well. We had a number of parents there. Mr. Jones joined me as well to begin talking about the changes in the program of studies. On Thursday afternoon, I was glad that I had enough time to stop into Polk, and Polk was having a 3rd grade parent event that I'd like to commend Ms. Feckity and the entire faculty and staff at Polk for putting together, because it was very well-attended. Each 3rd grade classroom was loaded with parents, standing room only in most cases, and it was in conjunction a little bit with St. Patrick's Day, but they did an activity called "What I'm Lucky For," and the parents and the students did it together and presented their answers and hung them up, and I very appreciated to see that. Thank you. Lastly, we have continued on with a number of professional development initiatives in the schools and at the district level. Ms. Rochester, Ms. Parlato, and I attended the first two days of a total of four-day institute that we will be going to about district coherence. As you know, that has been a focal point of the district improvement efforts, making sure that we have a system in place for many things, but particularly related to honing in on our instruction and the services that we provide to students and ensuring that we have coherence across all of our buildings. And that was a great seminar. It was presented by Michael Follen, who is a world-renowned education researcher, and we will attend two more of those days in April and May, one in April and one in May. And that is assisting us with much of our district improvement planning, carry that through to administrative retreat at the end of the school year, to hopefully another board retreat before we begin the next school year, and in the professional development that we will begin our year with for our teachers. Also, Ms. Parlato, of course, went and continued the curriculum instruction update meetings with the administrators, in part making sure that we are continuing to prepare for our NEAS visit, and also to ensure that our Smarter Balance Assessment testing is scheduled and that the technology is in place, and we won't have any issues with doing that state-mandated testing. Other than that, I think everybody else knows where I was on Thursday night, and that was pretty much the excitement for the week.
Any questions for Dr. Cartamola? Well, I would like to say on behalf of the board, first of all, thank you for all of the time and effort you put into educating our parents, giving opportunities for the community, multiple opportunities, to understand the Board of Ed-approved budget and the process that you went through. I'd also like to thank you for your wonderful presentation to the Town Council this past Thursday evening, and we're looking forward to the budget process moving forward at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Speaking of the budget, the Chair report. The Board of Education has been familiarizing itself with the 2015-2016 proposed and now Board of Ed-approved budget for some time. It is equally important to all of us that we are able to understand and articulate the costs associated with educating our students and employing hundreds of people. Throughout the past year, the Board has shed light on increasing costs associated with special education services, through presentations by Donna Rochester, a Director of Special Services, and most recently within Dr. Cartamola's budget presentation. To continue on that front, tonight, I would like to bring your attention to something that Mrs. Brown spoke about during her budget presentation. I'd like to bring your attention to the State of Connecticut's Excess Cost Grant, as its funding helps to offset overages in per pupil expenditures due to special education services. The Connecticut Excess Cost Grant provides partial funding for school districts, where the cost of educating a special education student exceeds the district's current expenditure per pupil. In order to qualify for this grant, we must first have spent four and a half times per pupil expenditure on a student. Four and a half times, just in order to be reimbursed for not the total cost, the excess cost. If we spend four and a half times a per pupil expenditure, we also must submit the information and associated expenses to the state. Some items, however, like legal expenditures, are not considered reimbursable expenses within the excess cost grant. The state then audits our submission, and based on their findings, reimburses us approximately 78% of the amount in excess of the per pupil expenditure. For example, using the state's current excess cost grant formula, if we spend $10,000 per student, the special education's costs must exceed $45,000 for that student before our district is eligible for any state reimbursement on the $35,000 in excess cost. Even if our special education excess costs meet all of the state eligibility requirements, we only receive 78% in reimbursements. In this example, we would receive $27,300 under the grant, and we would be left to find ways to make up the excess cost difference on our own. Since we have to spend four and a half times our per pupil expenditure in order to qualify, we are spending thousands of dollars without any excess cost reimbursement at all. The state grant is supposed to pay for all costs in excess of that figure, but unfortunately, the state appropriation has been capped, even as costs and the incidence of students requiring services have both risen. In a report on Connecticut's special education funding by the Office of Fiscal Analysis and the Office of Legislative Research, as of January 2014, 20% of the state's education cost sharing expenditure has been attributed to special education. In the current fiscal year, 2014-2015, our total special education budget is $7,50,831, which is 17.97% of our total budget. In the upcoming fiscal year, the 2015-2016 year, it is forecasted to be $7,903,381, or 19.56% of our budget. Each year, we do our best, based on the previous year's budget expenditures, current student needs, and our approximation of what we may receive back from the state to support special education through excess cost, to approximate what we will be responsible for funding through our local budget. However, the responsibility of the district is to provide the services that students need, based primarily on the students' needs, not whether the money is in our budget. And this is the reason that excess cost exists, to assist the town in providing necessary services to students that are in excess of what may be affordable and/or budgeted for. Although we and most districts in the state continue to see a rise in the overall costs associated with special education and flat funding for excess cost, we will continue to do our best for our students while both maintaining fiscal responsibility in our budget and maintaining compliance with state and federal education laws. Thank you. Moving on to item L, action items, adoption of items to be approved by consent. It is recommended that the Board approve of the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers based upon the result of the economic need for a reduction in force. Connecticut state law requires that non-renewed teachers whose contracts are not being renewed shall be notified in writing prior to May 1st, 2015. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve that the contract of employment of non-tenured teachers, as recommended by Dr. Cartamola, not be renewed for the following year upon its expiration at the end of the 2014-2015 school year. In accordance with the Connecticut state law, the superintendent is directed to advise such persons in writing.
Thank you, Mr. Fasensky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to Action Item Two, Consideration of the Approval of an Out-of-Town Field Trip to Waterford, Connecticut. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of the field trip to Camp Parkness in Waterford, Connecticut from June 1 through June 3, 2015, for 20 Watertown High School students accompanied by four chaperones in order to provide them with an opportunity to demonstrate their independence and daily living skills in an authentic context.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Is there a second?
Yes, I second it.
Thank you, Josephine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Moving on to Item M, Future Agenda Items and Board Member Comments. Do Board members wish to make any comments or suggestions for future agenda items at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to our second round of public participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? Are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? Okay. We'll move on to Item O. We have a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the negotiated contract settlement between the Board of Education and the custodial, maintenance, and technical employees. Attending the executive session will be James Gambardella, Josephine Cavalo-Rosa, Don Arcini, Janelle Wilk, Vic Vincenzi, Kathy Rinaldi, Leslie Crati, Dr. Bridget Caramola, Jill Brown, and myself, Tom Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.